Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United America, New York Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
Trying to find the agenda. I don't know if I got it here.
Okay, well, addition or deletions is what's up now.
Okay.
And for additions, this is Kristin, and just one addition to happen during the wastewater treatment facility report, and it's to discuss sludge and septic hauling provider following a note from...
Jill.
From Jill. And no deletions that I have.
I can't. I can't see that. I usually have it on my phone, too, but I can't grab that email.
Okay, well, next up is...
So if you could just roll through it.
Sure. Next up, we have introduction of those present. So we just had somebody, we went through that first, but we just had somebody chime in with an iPhone. Who just joined the meeting?
Yeah, we have an iPhone. Okay, apparently, they don't wish to be identified.
Okay. Next up, we have approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which is April 21, 2020.
So I had looked them over today at work. Under Keith's report, the only thing that I saw is the post-closure. It didn't spell out landfill.
Okay.
I think it just said post-closure.
I can't get it.
Oh, post-closure plan for the landfill. Is that what you wanted it to say, Mike?
It's the post-closure of the landfill.
Okay.
It just needs to have landfill stuck in that sentence because it didn't.
Okay.
That was the only thing that I spotted. Did anybody else see anything that... They had any questions about?
I can't even get on there.
We can hear you, whoever has joined.
Deb, it's Perry Brown.
Oh, hi, Perry Brown. This is Kristin Powers. We can hear you here on the meeting.
Okay, I'm just listening in.
Okay, great. If you had anything that you needed to say, Mike will give opportunities for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I will make that. Go ahead, Ed. I'll second.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
John will second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I gotta go through that. Chuck?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Great. Next up, we have pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors, of which there were no official pre-requested appearances. Mr. Turner's item is on the agenda during the road foreman's report.
Okay.
Next up, we have reports. First is the zoning administrator's report. However, there has been no official report submitted for this meeting. Our next report is the planning commission's report, which I have electronically. However, I'm unsure whether or not Harry would like to offer that report. Gary, you're muted. Perfect.
Okay, I'm there now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I can go through my report if you'd like. Did I... Who did I... I heard... Was that Jonas?
No.
No, Jonas isn't. I think he's in another meeting. Sounded like Jonas's voice. Okay, the first part of my report is mostly zoning administrator anyway. But we did have our first planning commission meeting last Monday night, virtually by Zoom, and it worked out pretty much okay, other than the fact that I lost my voice halfway through and had a hard time speaking. But other than that, Chuck suggested I get a glass of water. Thank you, Chuck. So our next meeting is again going to be virtually on the 25th of May. The first item we had discussed, and it really took pretty much most of our meeting, was we continued a discussion regarding information to be added to the existing town zoning applications. Jonas Rosenthal submitted a draft of revisions to the basic zoning permit application, which included detailed instruction sheet, page and a half application, site sketch supplemental page with separate page explaining setback requirements, separate fee schedule page, and a list of property butters. Now, a lot of this information is not on our current zoning application, and we've been asking Jonas for a while to try to make a little bit more complete, which he has now done. And we reviewed it, we contemplated the results, and we're going to be talking about it again next, at our next meeting on the 25th. Jonas did emphasize within the revised application, rights-of-way requirements clearly stated, permit application number on all pages, improved information for applicant that will reduce town liability and better serve the town during the appeal process. And Gary Berlin stated that this revision will help in DRB review to avoid unnecessary legal expenses. Commissioners, as I said, will review the draft and discuss finalized revisions at the May 25 meeting. All commissioners agreed that the information and format is what the commission was looking for, for the improvement of information. Jonas discussed state... Losing my voice again. Jonas discussed state requirements for the demolition of existing structures, and there was a brief discussion of permit closeout procedures. Frank Nelson added comments to this during the public portion of our meeting. Now, once we agree with Jonas's revision, does it have to go to the select board for adoption? Or is it up to the zoning administrator to just simply accept it? Or who accepts it? I guess that's the question.
That might be a good question for James Glick, because he designed the last zoning permit application. You can, if you have access to getting a hold of him, he might be able to chime in on that.
Yeah, okay, I'll drop him an email, and I'll send him a copy of the new application. Thanks, Deb.
You're welcome.
Item two was review of further updates to the town's unified bylaws. Further discussion of revisions to conditional uses was tabled and will be addressed at the next regular meeting on the 25th. Emphasis on that at that time will be on the description of conditional uses. Election of officers. We were going to have officers of the commission election last Monday night, but it was the opinion of commissioners present that elections should be tabled until the May meeting, with the hope that we have a full commission being present. I'm of the mind that if we have at least five, we'll have the elections anyway, rather than dragging it out another month. Zoning intern. I had been discussing with Jonas about the possibility of filling an internship position for the zoning administrator to organize and digitally record current, future, and historic zoning activities. Jonas and I agreed to discuss this further with the select board. Jonas is not here, so I'm bringing that up. Is there anywhere in a budget for the zoning administrator that could include an intern position? A college student or something that we could get to, who's very computer savvy to digitally update our records?
This is Julie.
Hi, Julie.
Hi. So Jonas had talked to me about that, and we did look through the budget, and we did feel that there was someone there. And I, he asked me if I had any people that I could think of, and I did reach out to one person who responded back that they're not interested, and I have two more leads.
You have two more leads?
I do.
What, are they college students, or...
They are high school, ready to start college.
Okay. Well, they probably know more about the computers than we do.
Yeah, and if anyone else has any other leads, you know, feel free to email me, and I'll contact multiple people.
Okay, great. Thanks, Julie.
Sure.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, as far as the changes in the permits and stuff go, as a select board, I think we would like to see them first before they were adopted. As far as, we'll see what James says about if there's a sequence of a... That has to occur first, but I think it would just be good continuity for us to review them before we went to adopt them, even if you just guys can...
This is John here. I wonder whether...
Anybody else?
I wonder whether our town attorney should take a glance at them, just in case there's something that the application's asking for that is not correct.
Okay, I think Jonas...
I absolutely agree with...
Okay, I'll talk to Jonas about that.
Go ahead, Harry.
But I think Jonas did base a lot of the new information that he's putting in there and requirements based on several other towns that he's worked with, including Polkney and Castleton and a couple of other towns. So it's kind of like a conglomeration of applications that have been used in other towns. The thing that the commission liked about it was the completeness of the information and the ease that can occur in trying to follow applications through the process.
So I agree. I'm sure that they're quite comprehensive, but knowing that if there was any question, Meryl would be the one that would have to stand behind him, I think
Yeah.
it should be just a breeze for her to take a quick minute, read through them, and stamp her okie dokie on them and such. I think it would just be in our best interest. So as we get to that point, I would strongly recommend that we do that.
Okay, very good.
Does anybody else have anything for Harry? Okay, I guess not. Moving along.
So next up, we have the road foreman's report.
Road foreman.
One item under that in the agenda is just the continuation of discussion regarding the culvert in question brought up by Mr. Turner.
Okay, why don't you address that first, then, please, Keith?
Okay, well, I haven't really done much with that. I was down there today, and I did mark out where I thought the culvert could be moved to, if that's what's decided. There's obviously, you can see in the lawn above his spring tile, there is an old swale there that has not been maintained and is silted back in. So that is allowing more water to travel down towards his spring tile there. So once again, it's, we can make a good faith effort there and try to address some things, but I think the landowner himself may have to, a few things of his own to do there, just to, you know, compliment anything that we do. Because I really, it moves the culvert down the ditch to the end of the ditch, about as far as we can really push the water feasibly without, you know, creating problems for the town there. And it does get it past his spring tile, but it does not get it past his pond. So I don't, I don't know if Alan's been up there and looked. Like I said, it was this afternoon when I was down there, and I put some white flags there across. And, you know, we can go to the end of the ditch with the culvert, and then we can actually angle the culvert across the road and, you know, get further down his lawn, but it's still not going to eliminate the factor of the water dumping down across and going towards his pond. So I don't know if there's, whatever anybody's thoughts are. Alan, I'm sure, has some thoughts on it.
Alan, you're muted.
Okay, great. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I'd like to thank Ed and Chuck for coming out, too. Each of them came out during the past week and took a look at it, which was really great. Would be grateful to have them share their thoughts. I agree with the principles of better roads from the state guidance on better roads, to get the water off the road quickly and avoid having the water run lengthwise down the road. In that sense, I agree that you want to keep the ditch as short as possible. But I also agree with the principle of diverting as much runoff as possible away from the surface waters into vegetated areas. My pond's surface water, my drinking water, might not be surface, but it's drinking water. And it should be nice to reflect on the possibility of taking the water off at the bottom of the hill, rather than run it parallel up above my land until they decide to run it off. Why not just take it off when it gets to the bottom there at the junction with Rafter Road and slide it across the road right there before it runs parallel along the contour? Why not just bring it down when it's at the bottom of the thing where the contour, where it makes the turn? Why not just keep the water flowing, would be my thought. But if Ed or Chuck have any thoughts from their visit out there, I'd sure be interested in their perspective.
Chuck, do you want to go, or you want me to? Hello?
Chuck, you are muted. There you go.
Who is?
You're good now, Chuck.
Okay. Yes, I went there and spent considerable time coming down the hill and looking for a swale where I seem to remember in the past that there was a culvert that went across Towesley Hill Road and ended up discharging water on the northerly side of Towesley Hill. Now, you could put a pretty straight line on that culvert, Keith, and it couldn't be any more direct at the line of that well tile. So I haven't seen your white marks yet, but can't do it tomorrow, but I surely will check on it Thursday. But that's, you know, I mean, I'm thinking that we need to address the culvert issue. That is a brand-new culvert, so when they, when they did Rafter, yeah, whatever road, the culvert was put in new. So that must be, I'm guessing, a new culvert entirely. I don't think there was ever a culvert there prior to this one, was there, Keith?
Yes, there was. That one is put exactly where the other one was. And there is a culvert halfway between Rafter Road and the top of the hill at what used to be Gordy and Sally Brown's, that crosses to the meadow. But once you get down into the center of that curve, you have a higher bank on the opposite side of the road. And if you dump the water across there, it was going to run parallel with the Towesley Road all the way to the bottom of the hill, which is less than, less than desirable. You know, that's not an added culvert. That is put there in the, to replace an old steel culvert that had rotted out, and we upgraded the culverts out there when we fixed the road up. And that one is put right where the other one was. The swale that I'm talking about, you can see it if you walk the Rafter Road. It parallels the Rafter Road, and it was between the base of the slope at Rafter Road and the spring and the pond. And it turned the water out past the pond. You can see the depression in the lawn that used to be there. And if that swale was opened back up and maintained, it would turn the water before it went all the way down and created the problem at his spring tile and the pond.
Okay, well, I'm just bringing up another point on a culvert. This is Chuck again. Additional information, Keith, on Towesley Hill Road, about halfway up, where Fred had his driveway going into the field. There is a culvert there. Is that the one you're talking about?
I believe it is, yes. It's halfway, I'm just saying halfway, plus or minus, from the Rafter Road up to what was Gordy Brown's driveway, that crosses the road and dumps water through meadow. So the only water that goes down through to the Rafter Road intersection comes from halfway down the hill to the Rafter Road, and then that's what's pushed out there. But there's a lot of just sheet drainage off that hill up above the Rafter Road that comes down into there.
Yeah, if I could...
Well, this ends my conversation.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
If I could just, yeah, with respect to the sheet off, I think most of the sheet stuff comes off the meadow before it gets to forested land. Certainly puts water, but most of that doesn't go surface. Most of that water, pond, it flows underground. So it's not really bringing sediment, it's not bringing anything down. And that's what the swales are for, basically, to hang all across the yard to the meadow above the pond. And that, you know, that does, that does do a lot of the water coming off the, you know, coming off the hill. But that's a forested hill, and that I sent the links to, you can see there's a fair amount of water that pours down that road. And then, instead of keeping going, it goes parallel on the contour. And that's not really what you want to do, is it's okay for you to parallel the road, but to parallel along the contour, as opposed to parallel going downhill, it's two different ways to run your water. So I guess that's my concern there.
Can you, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Who's it, Ben?
We can hear you, Ed.
Can you...
We can hear you, Ed.
Okay, when that road was upgraded, was a culvert eliminated or moved up the hill?
No.
I thought it used to go across just north of the, of the intersection and follow the road down on the northerly side of that, the road.
No. No, there never was a culvert there, Ed. If you remember, there was actually a bank on the inside of the turn as you came down through there. There was very little ditch line there at all, until you got down across from Allen's.
Because it seems like an awfully long ways to go to carry that water all the way from, basically, Brown's house all the way down to Allen's.
No, there's a culvert halfway down.
Oh.
No, I... Well, maybe it's halfway down, but it looked like pretty at the top of the hill.
No, there's a, well, I think it's, it's close to halfway down to the Rafter Road intersection. There's a culvert that crosses below Sally Brown's. And so the water that you're getting to the intersection is partway up the hill and what is caught in the ditch line on the Rafter Road.
But why couldn't it be, if there was a culvert just to the north of the intersection, that would take, that would pick up probably 80% of the water that's flowing down that hill and divert it across there before it gets to Allen's?
Well, it could, but you're going to add a problem on the other side of the Towesley Road then, because you're going to put it there on the hill, and you're going to have more erosion and whatnot going down the edge of the road. The culverts are designed so that they go in and run the water away from the road and not put it, concentrate it on the edge of the road for a long stretch. And that's exactly what it's going to do. But it will run down to the property line there where that swale is in Fred's Meadow. And to be honest with you, we can't add a culvert and dump water over towards somebody else's land without permission from them. Where that culvert is, it was put, is a pre-existing culvert, and that's why it was put there. So we would basically have to get permission to put the water across the Towesley Road onto the opposite side from that current landowner.
Okay, so you have, you have gone there, and you put some flags out, Keith, but you haven't yet had a chance to get everybody there at the same time?
No, we were in West Paulidall last week, and it just didn't fall together for me. So I just, you know, I went down there today because I hadn't been there, and I put some white flags in at the end of a, basically, that end of where I put them, that pitches back towards the existing culvert. So we're going to have to create grade, trying to push the water farther beyond where the culvert currently is, and then it will cross over. But, I mean, you could push the water with a major project, cut some of those maple trees, and dig the bank back and everything along the top side of the Rafter Road. You could go all the way down and oversize that culvert. But once again, you're going a, going a long distance with a large volume of water, and that's the, that's the least thing we want to do.
Okay, so I guess the best thing is going to be to get everybody together as soon as possible, so that we can, can try and come up with a resolution for this situation. Ed or Chuck, or even you, John, had considered, you said you would, you would be open to go. So if, Keith, if you could get a hold of at least a couple of the guys, and Alan, and you could all kind of look, look at what's going on. And I know, for me, not being as familiar with, with that area as you guys all are, I'm not, I'm not getting a total picture of it and stuff. But if you guys could all meet and look this over, and then we can proceed with a resolution.
Well, let's set a time and a date right now where everybody's together, then, so I don't have to make a half a dozen different contacts.
Excellent.
Yeah, I can be open anytime. Just advise me when, uh, and I'll make myself available all this week.
Chuck, you said Thursday is your open day? Chuck?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday or Friday?
And we aren't gonna get Keith on Friday because it doesn't work.
Right, so Thursday. Um, Ed, can you?
Hey, this is like Groundhog's Day, so every day's the same, so whatever.
All right, well, let's, let's do Thursday morning at nine o'clock. How does that work?
Good.
Sounds good for me. That's fine for me.
This is Bob. I'll, I'll be there.
I didn't get that, John.
Yes, good for me.
Okay. Good. So you guys can now meet down there Thursday morning at nine o'clock and, and come up with a resolution for this and, and that way we can go from there. That would be great. Thank you. Do you have anything more, Alan, or are you all set with that?
Um, I'm all set and I, I didn't notice the flag, so I don't even know what, uh, the, uh, I didn't, wasn't aware that Keith had come, come by, uh, until just now. So I'll go out and look at them and I'll be welcoming you at nine o'clock on Thursday. Thanks very much for your time and attention. And thanks again, uh, Ed and Chuck for dropping by earlier in the week. Uh, so thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Keith, um, you talked to Eileen Troy this afternoon a little bit about, uh, the culvert up by, uh, can you elaborate a little bit on?
Well, what I told her was that we were aware that there was more water there, but it was largely not due to anything we did. It's largely due to the fact that they're pumping a quarry out back and all the water is coming that way. So that compounded by the beaver situation was, uh, you know, and I told her we were aware there was more water there and we were monitoring it and, um, really, that's about it. We have the same situation there, basically. You know, we have changed a pipe and put a, put a culvert in there and it's dumping water where it has always dumped, but it's a larger volume, so it has become, or trying to become our problem. But it's, it's not our water, you know?
Right.
So, um, and their concern is, is that I guess, uh, Connie Pufundy is trying to sell that property and, um, you know, they're just have some concerns that this may, may impact that. But, um, there's, any of that water that comes to that hollow comes that way. It does not go to the north at all. It all comes that way. Now, I talked with Paul Obus, he's pumping also, of course, but his ends up going the other way and through the culvert by Bruce Hewlett's on the, the Briar Hill Road. But I guess it's a, the name is Eric Healy that owns that existing quarry there and there's pumping activity going on there. So that is why there is a more volume of water there than what we're currently used to. So, um, I just kind of explained that to her and told her that we were aware of it and we were just monitoring it. But, um, unless that pond comes above the bottom of our culvert, it's not going to flow. And our culvert is set so that it maintains that water level in the pond that it's, has always maintained. If it comes above that, then it will flow through our culvert. But if it stays below that, there won't be any water flowing. But as long as they're pumping, there's probably going to be a flow of water there, which we do not have a lot of control over that.
Right. Yeah, that's a whole, that's a whole different bunch of people to talk to. So-
Oh, yeah. And I, I told her, feel free to contact us, but that's what was going on there. And as long as they were pumping, it probably was going to be a continuous flow of water. And, um, she was, seemed content with that. So, and she said she'd been up there and looked and she could hear a pump running. And, um, so that's what, and I had actually talked to her brother last week anyways, um, about the same situation.
Okay, because I-
That's all that has ever done is, is weep through under the road there and, you know, any pipe that was in there has been in a, you know, not good and functional anyway, but it has always flowed through the bedrock, the slate rock and gone through under the road. That was all raised up when they altered the road to the west of there. And, um, you know, that pond has always maintained its level. And now they are adding a significant amount more water to it. So it's, uh, it is what it is. So, there again, you know, when you get into the quarries over there, it's, it's a whole different program. They all have pumping rights and dumping rights and everything that go with a quarry. And it's, uh, you know, that's, nothing the highway department belongs involved in, so.
Alls we did was just upgraded, upgrade an existing culvert and, and that just brought attention to it.
Yes. Well, that's brought attention to it. That and the beavers. I mean, we had a significant beaver issue there. And they basically had coated the bank over with mud, so nothing was floating through or, you know, bleaching through like it normally had been. And whatever was there for a pipe was not significant enough except the flow. So that, that just complicated things. But if they quit pumping, it will go down. When, when we drove away after changing the culvert, there was no, no water coming through it. And I don't think it did for the entire weekend. And then I think they started pumping again and, and now there's a significant flow there. And it, and it's pretty constant. It's, uh, so.
Well, I talked to her after work and, and she seemed content with what you had told her and, and they were just gonna watch it. And she, she said she'd let us know. So I think we're good with that. So what have you, uh, what's your, uh, schedule for the upcoming week and what did you accomplish last week?
Oh, well, we worked on the switch road pretty steady. We're well underway over there. We've changed, I don't know, three or four culverts. That one we're talking about and three others, I guess. Cleaned the ditch lines off, cut some brush. Um, we're nearly completed with the landfill. We've got the wells out. Um, those are all set. Put the gates up. Um, I haven't done anything with that back entrance yet. Um, because the Williams boys are gonna be delivering some nice fine stuff to us across the road. So we've got the road opened up that joins that property with the landfill property because that's how they're going to come through there. So I don't want to make a huge obstacle course for them. So what I'm thinking is I'll put it- they're gonna put it across the road on where we've removed the slate. And it's, uh, it's pretty nice stuff. And he's got a few thousand yards of it there that he's just gonna dump in the quarry and bury it. And so I told him we would take all of that he had. So, um,
Oh, they're gonna bring it over there for us? Nice.
No, they're gonna deliver it and pile it for us. He said he'd even bring the excavator over and pull it up into piles and everything. Because he, he does, they want to get rid of it. That's what they want. They don't want to see it again. So, um, and it's all, you can see there's a little pile there, the one part they dumped that we actually used as backfill around the, the post that we set for the gate and stuff. And if you look when you go by, Mike, you can see what I'm talking about. It's-
You can, you can load that with our loader and stuff?
Load it with our loader and we can probably get it spread if we have to. If we're doing large, large volume of it, maybe we would want a, you know, a bulldozer to spread it. But we can, it's stuff we can use. It's, we got application for it. And if it's, if he'll deliver it right there for us, we'll, we'll make room for him. So, uh, but that kind of creates a problem. It's what? It kind of creates a problem.
I said we can't get any better than that.
No, it can't. No. It's, it's just that it creates a problem on, we were just gonna barricade off with quarry rubble or something, the back access. But we can't do that and allow them to come through. So I'm thinking I'm gonna put a cable across out there. But, uh, something that they can put up and take down. And we're gonna have to, I'm just cautious on that respect because if it's dirt bikes and four-wheelers, I don't want somebody crashing into a cable. So we've gotta get some, some signage and some ribbons or something out there before we pinch that off.
How much was a gate?
Oh, I think the gates were eighty-nine dollars apiece. We used some existing telephone poles we had for gate posts and, so. Have you seen the gate?
I mean, the value of, the value of that material, I think, for, from a liability purpose, we'd be further had to spend a couple hundred bucks and put a couple of decent gates there because more than likely there'll be other opportunities throughout the time that they're working that pit to, to have that, what is it, top or something that they're blowing?
Yep. It's all, all trimmings and tops and they're getting ready to blast it. But really, they haven't blasted in there. I had heard rumors about all the blasting going on, but they haven't blasted there. Um, but they are getting ready to and he'll have a bunch of stuff that is, he said will be pretty well pulverized. And I told him we would take all he could put over there. We would put it in a pile and we would use it. So.
That would be awesome. So we, I would think we ought to put gates. What the rest of you guys think?
I think we should have gates there.
Yeah. I don't want to put a culvert, uh, cables. I don't like cables.
No, I don't want to see a cable. Somebody will be, take their head off.
Yeah. They're dangerous. The, the gates for a couple hundred bucks, I think, would make the most sense.
All right. We'll put another gate on the backside then. And other than that, do you want, you want to contact Suilla or do you want me to?
I can, I can tell him that, that we're, uh, that we've got all that work done if he wants to check it out. Or maybe he just may want some pictures or something. Who knows? Did you get that, uh, the tube that was down in the swamp hole there?
Yeah, we did. It really-
Okay, good.
I was, I was dreading it and I, and I think I could have tipped it over and carried it out by hand, Mike.
Terrific.
No, I got my boots on and wudged down in there and the ground was so soft. And, um, and we had tobacco there with the extender boom way out and thirty or forty feet of chain or something. And I hooked the chain on it and started laughing because it was all loose. I think the weight of the chain almost tipped it over. So we dragged it up out of there and it's gone. So we did get it. So it was, it was, uh, certainly not nearly as bad as I fretted over. So.
Good. And has, uh, you said over on the switch road, you thought that some of those, uh, quarry operators were gonna put material on the road to build up?
Yes, they said, they all said that they would cooperate with us when we got ready to, uh, to go forward. So, and I, I don't know whether that means the whole road or just the, the west end there where it's so bad that they use most often or what, but they're definitely willing to cooperate with us. So, that was, you know, I mean, we're looking at, probably, uh, you know, we're looking at one piece of rental equipment instead of two and, you know, and so on and so forth. So, and we just kind of need to keep track of that situation and take the best advantage of it we can. And, uh,
Absolutely.
You know, uh, whether we gotta work into their time schedule or what, you know, I mean, obviously if they're moving a bunch of it and they want to get rid of it, that's the time for us to be available for them and not when they're, you know, we can't go over there looking for it when they're trying to pull good stone out and get it to the mill. So.
So as long as you're in, in close contact with them and when the road's ready, just tell them, give them the green light. Just let us know so we can be prepared to do what we need to do.
Okay. And then, um, another thing, um, Lee and Corey has reached out to me, said he doesn't have a lot going on with that big excavator and he's interested in renting that to the town if we're going to rent one. So, um, if we do something in that respect, then we probably will go that route instead of going with, um, you know, like a Nortrak or somebody like that. So.
We just have to make sure the cities and towns, we got everything in, all our ducks in a row there.
Yeah, well, that's what I told me. And he's actually working with his insurance agent right now and they're drawing up a rental agreement, same as we would have through Nortrak.
Perfect.
So, I mean, we're not there yet. But that's something that's in the future and we might as well contribute towards, uh, towards the taxpayer and send it out of town somewhere. So.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then, you know, I, I, you got my email that we're basically finishing up what we were talking about last week and going forward, when we get done on the switch road, we'll move to Bets Bridge and get all that prepped and ready and the culvert's changed and ready to, to go over there when, when the time comes. Then we'll have to, uh, regroup and visit the budget and, and see where we're at going forward. So.
Okay. All right, that all sounds good. You guys are practicing your, uh, your COVID protocol?
Yes, we are. Uh, you know, uh, we're staying separate as best we can. That's really what we're doing. You know, we, it's, uh, we're conscious of everything, but a lot of it, the PPE and stuff probably doesn't apply in our application. You know, we, we, uh, you know, we aren't wearing suits and, you know, we do have masks. We're not wearing masks when we're, for the most part. Two per truck if we're in a truck. We're not. And of course, we meet at the shop and we're usually back there and in and out together at the end of the day a little bit. But today we did work together some because we were working on them gates over there and that's not something one guy can, can accomplish. So, uh, but we're all aware of it and doing what we can. So I think Julie's got some papers for me. They'd have a Volsha required training or slideshow we had to review that was just information that we have to keep on file for, um, just purposes that say we've been trained properly, I guess, if, uh, if somebody asks us. But, uh, I think Julie's got some, uh, some forms filled out for me that we can sign and say we've done it. So we did it on- John Hasla?
He's got his signed.
He's got his?
He's, he's certified. Yeah. Oh, you can't see. You're only on the phone. That's right. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Keith?
Um, Keith, this is Bob. Um, I'm not sure if you were in the loop, uh, though, up Sunday afternoon, a couple of those, uh, bombadilla trees up across from Jim Kramer's old house came down and took out the power lines and everything. I think, uh, Green Mountain Power cleaned it up enough so it was passable, but I don't know if you've, you've been up there to-
Barry and I were there first thing Monday morning. Uh, Dave Ricard had sent me a message that said that there was an issue up there. They had cut it off and made the road so they could pass, but we had to clean it up and
Right. It was, yeah, it was pretty well passable the other day. I just thought, yeah, a little, needed a little more pushing back and, uh, on the corner there and stuff. But it was, uh, it was only a matter of time before those came down.
Oh, yeah.
There's still more to come down up there. So I don't know what we'll run into with that.
Yeah, there, there's several of them lurking right there right now that are all in bad shape. But they're, they're, they're not, not in the, in the town right away. They're all back out of it, but they're all huge too. So, yeah.
Right.
They make quite a mess when they come down. Yeah, we spent, I don't know, three, probably about three hours Monday morning cleaning up some debris here and there. So.
Right. I must have been there just before you drove through, just before you did, just to make sure it was, it was passable. And it was. So I just wasn't sure you were in the loop. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. And we, uh, Dave took care of the bullfrog thing over there.
Okay.
We went, that, you know, he sent me the message over the weekend and, and, um, you know, Wells usually grades that road when they grade theirs and they just, they're actually, you said our end was in bad shape. Well, it was kind of bad right out through the whole distance. So it was-
Yeah, it got gradually better.
So they graded it first thing Monday morning. Yeah, they graded it first thing Monday morning anyway. And, and we went over and cold patched the potholes there off the end of it. So it's, that should be taken care of too. So.
Good, good. I'm not sure what is gonna come of the, uh, of the bank issue over there on, uh, Good, good. I'm not sure what is going to come of the, uh, of the bank issue over there on, uh, on Friday afternoon, traffic was not only backed out under the bullfrog, but it was actually backed out into Route Thirty, which is not.
You should try to work there.
Um, I, I know, but I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, the bank is all about safety, um, and everything, but they're actually creating a hazard by backing traffic out into a state highway because of their drive-through is, is so backed up. So I'm hoping that they figure a way to make things more efficient over there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was bad over there when we were there. It was, uh, kind of a obstacle course when you throw a loader and a grader in the mix and, you know, guys in the street working.
Mm-hmm.
So, but it's, it's done now, so we'll stay away from there. Um, Mike? Mike, be here.
Yes.
You, uh, another thing, it's not highway related, but did you get the email I sent about the DRB? I sent it to your select board email account?
Yes, I did get that, but I did, um, the one that you had the meeting yesterday?
We had a meeting last night. And, um, it was to deal with the Cameron Perham, Ashley Wait situation over there. Where, um, I guess there is, uh, well, if you read the email, you know that there's a, Cameron is potentially going to purchase that property and basically it was asking for, uh, an omission of the notice of violation if he purchased the property because basically that would make it into effect that it's his own property that he's encroaching on, so it's null and void, okay? So the consensus of the DRB was that, you know, uh, we would certainly support that and make a recommendation to you, but it, it seems to us in the bylaws of the Development Review Board that after we have made a decision and it goes to litigation and then it's an appeal, which is where we're at with that, it's probably you guys, uh, that decide whether or not to, uh, to support that. And our decision was, our recommendation to you is going to be that he gets a permit of the building as built because his violation is that he did not, his building is compliant, but it's not built as in accordance with the permit that he submitted to the town, okay? So if he submits a new permit to the zoning administrator and everything is compliant, that we go ahead and, um, take away his notice of violation. And, uh, I would recommend some discussion with Merrill and, and, um, get some feedback from her before I made that decision, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to her tomorrow and talk to her a little bit about that some more.
Right, so just, just so you're aware of what's going on there, so.
Okay, I was, I was following the trail, but I didn't realize it was going to end up in our territory, so.
Yeah, well, we didn't either, but it was, I mean, basically John and James and, you know, your review of the bylaws and after we have held a hearing and made our decision, I think it kind of goes to the, the town fathers. You guys decide whether or not that, we don't have set fines or have violations. We just decide whether you are in violation, so. Um, and I would, Jonas was in, on the meeting as well, so he is aware and you could talk to him about it.
Okay.
Because he is the one that suggested maybe it was the select board and it was out of the duties of the DRB to make that decision. So once it's gone to this point, it's, it's beyond, it's out of our hands, so.
Okay, um, well, I'll follow through on that. Thank you.
And other than that, yes.
Um, I haven't heard you say anything about the mats over in Granville that we looked at. What's the story?
Well, the COVID thing has got it kind of screwed up and I don't even know where they are at. I don't know if they pulled them. I don't know if they're, um, still available or anything. I have not talked to that guy only once right after you and I were over there and looked at, so. So I don't have an answer to that at this time.
Do you still have the number?
Yeah.
I would suggest trying to call them again and see if they are still available at what price.
Okay, I'll do that.
This, this is Bob, uh, Keith and, and Chuck, this is Bob. Um, about two weeks ago, I did see a whole bunch of flatbeds lining up at the bowling alley. Looked like they, uh, may, might have been preparing to go in and haul some of those mats out of there. Um, my guess is they, they may not all be off-site, but a lot of them were probably hauled away. Um, so probably the sooner, sooner the better to look into that, I guess.
Yeah, he was, uh, he was looking for any avenue he could find to get rid of them when I talked to him. And he said if they couldn't get rid of them, they were going to dig up the Little League Road and bury them in there to, to make that a, just to get rid of them, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, but then they were shut down for a while and there was only one guy on the job just watching and I haven't even followed up since then, so. So I will, I'll call him and, and try to get some information to see on availability and price, so.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for Keith?
Um, this is Ed. Yes, I do again regarding, um, our dumpster, but first I want to ask, or I want to say, um, if we are meeting at nine AM Thursday down to Allen and Minga's, um, we, I feel we've put them off here longer than we should have. Will we have some answers for them two weeks from tonight on what the options are?
I would think we should be able to come to a resolution.
Good, thank you. Um, now regarding Hubbard, uh, trash and recycle in the dumpster?
Yeah, go ahead and tell them what you learned, please.
Um, well, I spoke with Mike. Um, they would be willing to dump the dumpster and return it to us for, I think it was three and a quarter or three and a half, three hundred and fifty or three, three hundred and twenty-five. He also said he would also, he would be interested in buying it if we wanted to sell it. Um, so he has different options. I have spoken with Keith. I've kind of gone full circle. After speaking with Keith, he said something about that, yeah, if we had it dumped and brought it back, well, you'd almost have enough to fill it again. So I'm wondering if maybe we should keep it and have them dump it for us. We can always sell it to them at a later date if we want to.
My opinion, my opinion is, is we should keep it and have them, have them dump it and then stash it somewhere where people can't get to it so that material that just shows up can get removed. Because we're constantly having issues with stuff thrown here or there. I don't, you know, and like you said before, Greenup Day or something like that. I think that's pretty reasonable to get it dumped for sure.
Yes, okay. So I will, I will reach out to Tim Hubbard and have him give Keith a call to line things up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to put it back where it was, Keith, or?
No, I do not.
Okay.
We need to, we need it somewhere. It's not quite in the, quite as an attractive nuisance, that's all. We need it somewhere where we can use it. And I will think on that and, and we'll come up with a, a better place for it where it's not quite so highly visible.
Yeah, okay.
This is Ed again. The other thing I was thinking about, we've been talking about security. You know, it might not be a bad idea to have a camera on that town garage just to see what's going on.
Yes, I, it's, it's not a bad idea at all. Actually, we should, we should consider that for sure, especially because a lot of the trucks have to stay outside and stuff.
Yes, yeah, because I think things are going to get worse before they get better.
No.
I don't think there's any question about that for the time being anyway.
Mike, hey, Mike, there's a couple of comments. Um, this is Kristen from Frank regarding a couple of items that had been discussed. First, uh, regarding the DRB last night, select board might only wait and might be only at the wait and see mode for right now as the zoning administrator would review any new permit application details when it arrives. Why should the select board be involved now? That's the first comment. Um, there's a, also process question as a number of select board members are meeting at Allen's, even just to view, is that a special meeting that needs to be warned according to the public meeting laws? So something to keep in mind. Um, there should be no more than three of you guys that meet there tomorrow unless you want to warn it as a special meeting.
Well, three would be, three would be a forum.
Right, so no more than three.
Two. No more than two.
Sorry, no more than two.
Right.
Uh, so.
I can bow out. I've seen it. I'll go down. I'll, and I can bow out.
All right.
Okay, so just FYI, um, and then the last comment.
As long as no decisions are made, they can meet anyways. They can all be together as long as no decisions are made.
Okay.
Just one, and then one last comment from Frank, Frank regarding state police and dumpster. Have we finished the lost and abandoned property process to take ownership of it?
We're not getting rid of it, so it's, it's still whoever's it is. We're just dumping it and bringing it back, so it doesn't matter. We're not trying to, we're not trying to own it.
We're not trying to.
We're not trying to own it. No, we're just getting it dumped and it's coming back, so none of that, that stuff is all moot.
Okay, thank you to Frank for the comments. That's all.
Okay, if we could back up, Kristen. Uh, if we could back up to the first comment, why the select board is involved is because he's asking to waive the notice of violation, which had some financial penalties, penalties involved. So that would be definitely the select board that makes that decision.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
The new perm, the new permit would definitely go through the zoning administrator and then follow the proper channels to the DRB or whoever, you know, depending on the situation. But the, the fines and violations are, are monetary things that definitely go to the select board.
Some suggestions would be to.
And sorry, this is, this is Jonas. Sorry, Jonas, just introducing you.
I'm sorry. So my suggestion would be to have Chairman Mike, um, uh, have a little conversation with, um, Merrill. Um, and talk about the pros and cons and, um, of the suggestion by, uh, Perham's, Perham and his attorney, Jeff, and I forgot his last name. But, so that's why it goes back to the select board.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. I'll get ahold of Merrill and, and, and have a discussion with her and so we can be on the same page. Thank you, Jonas. So if we're all good with Keith, let's go to.
Hold on, this is Ed. I've just had, hello, I just have one more comment regarding the dumpster. Um, there is no name on it. There is no serial number on it. It has sat there for at least five years, uh, so like Hubbard said, it's basically ours. It's deserted, abandoned.
Right. And we're not trying to do anything with it other than just keep it, so, um, to go through anything else, it's fine. Thank you.
If, uh, if it's a matter of whether we can, you got to decide to dump it, I bet I can get Bob Morino as a health officer to tell us that you got to get it dumped and then we'll, then we'll have to do it anyway, so.
Yeah, but I, we, we don't have.
Frank, Frank's comment is there is a law on that property status.
Right, but we're not doing anything with the dumpster, Frank. We're not going to do anything different but dump it. It's going to stay right there. If whoever wants it, wants it. If they can prove it's theirs, they can come and get it. So, um, we're all set with, with Keith? Assessor's report?
There is no report for this meeting.
And the town clerk's report, please?
Um, okay, um.
Go ahead, Deb, please. Thank you.
Bob, there will be a permit for you at the town hall tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and I did forward you, um, all of you, Bob Morino's reports, if, if you got them. Yes, no?
Yeah, I got them.
We, yeah, he sent them to me too. I had distributed them as well.
Okay, um, the status of the town hall, we're still not letting anybody in. Um, mostly because we can't adhere right now to the CDC, ACCD and Department of Health uh, protocol for sanitizing three times a day and after each visitor to the building. We're working on it, um, much, when I, every day, every day I have had to spend time at multiple resources trying to get the stuff that we need um, in order to adhere to those, those, that protocol. It's been very frustrating, very, um, mentally draining. But we're getting closer. We're not going to open any sooner than the original stay, stay safe order. Um, and then we're going to work on how to let people into the building when we do. It would be most likely by appointment. Um, I have been taking care of, uh, researchers, uh, doing the doc retreat for them. I issued a marriage license today. Um, I've done notaries and dog licenses and it's just a new way of doing things, uh, without face-to-face contact. Um, I'm, I'm going in mostly on Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays and working from home on the times that I'm not at the office. Um, we did, I, myself and Julie and Karen have each completed that OSHA CDC training, um, which basically says in order to open your, open your business, you have to have all these things in place, which we're working on. Um, I also spent two hours today on a Zoom meeting with the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association dealing with, um, things in legislation with regard to elections, uh, annual conference, and there was one other thing that we discussed, but it was, oh, digitization of records and what's happening on the state level with that. Um, I did want to get some feedback from you guys on the door. Um, I sent that information memo that I, I sent you two emails last week and I also put it in the memo today. Um, also along with that, I'm in communication with the Elections Division to try to make sure that the, we have the appropriate, uh, PPE for poll workers and election workers. Um, most, mostly I'm trying to make sure that there's a, a plastic shield between the voter and the poll worker. There is talk and I, and I saw, um, that there might be some resi, not resistance, but a little bit of pushback from Governor Scott on a hundred percent mailing of the November general election, um, ballots. Worse, that's, that has to ha, that has to be, that decision has to be made soon between Jim Condos and Scott because of the timing that it takes to get everything done. It's not going to happen for the August primary because it, there's just not enough time to do everything that needs to be done to procure that. So there will be, um, a push for absentee voting and, uh, but there will, the polling place would be open on both days, which needless to say, I'm very anxious about. Um, but we'll do what we got to do. So I would like, uh, your comments. Um, it's been very, very stressful, to say the least, to, um, be dealing with everything that we're dealing with and to try to make sure. we're dealing with and to try to make sure that we're fulfilling all of the needs of the researchers and the community, and also to keep everybody safe. Polit has, has been very successful in not having any new cases, any cases at all. Vermont has been very good. I feel that as things open up in the next few days and weeks, that we're gonna see some, a surge of cases. So, anyway, getting back to the replacing of the glass in the door, I would like your feedback on that, please.
I think that was a, a good idea to, to get that door adjusted like that, and you said that Rod would build the shelves that you needed to save the, to, to save us quite a little bit of money, so for $500, we can have that room adjusted, it seems like it makes sense.
Okay.
To me, what do the rest of you guys think?
I'm good with it, John here.
John? Ed, what do you think?
This is Bob, that sounds fine.
This is Ed, I just wonder why there couldn't be a piece of Plexiglas, say, on her desk? If you're gonna be letting people into the building to reach the door, why, I guess, you know, like they have at the supermarkets and things, would something like that work or that wouldn't work well enough?
It, that is what, well, it's not a bad idea, but the whole point is to keep people out of the office for them, for, because we don't know how long this is gonna go on, and it also adds as a security measure. A lot of the towns throughout the state have had various things done to help their office become accommodating in this time, some of it is to build actual barriers around their office, which includes the Plexiglas or a safety glass. Some have secured their doors up, like, that I'm talking about. So, for right now, the plan is that nobody is going to be coming in the front door beyond a certain point. Karen and Julie and I have talked, and for the, when we do open, for the time being, there's gonna be a containment area so that none of the offices will be accessed by the public.
No. This, this is Ed again, I just had a thought tonight, and I, it would probably take major rearranging, but what if they could only come in where the stairway is to the upstairs? Could that be, could that doorway somehow be opened up that used to go into the office? In that corner?
Well, there used to be a transaction window there, and that's kind of what I'm talking about converting the existing door into as a transaction window.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, it would be much more expensive than the $491.
It would, but, but that would keep them out of the building and they'd be contained in their own little area. Like, that could be done. I'm just throwing out.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I'm, I asked you guys to see if, what you, what your thoughts were, and, and I appreciate any input, I've been racking my brain, and like I said, it's been very exhausting. We've done, we've done a super job, I mean, on the days that Jonas is there, that's the day that I tend to step back to keep the numbers down in the building, because technically right now, we're not supposed to have more than two. So Julie and I, it's Julie and I, most of the time, Karen is there on Mondays, and we aren't going into each other's office. Just trying to check that, so, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know how long this is gonna last, I mean, we could be another year.
Well, I, wow, that's, I, I think that's a little over the top, but.
Well, I think that there's a varying number of opinions, it could be months, it could be, I mean, if people get too relaxed about this, we're going to have an uptick.
Well, sooner or later, we're gonna have to deal with it, that's my personal opinion, but that has nothing to do with, no.
I feel that, I think that the, to adjust the door right now would be the quickest and most efficient way to, to improve this, you know, if we do, if it does turn into a long-term type of thing, then we probably do, you know, we'll have to do a lot of revamping, but, I mean, to just adjust that door, to split that door so she can keep that, you know, area split off, would, would be a quick, easy way to, to establish, to establish what she needs for protection and to meet the guidelines, I feel. I don't know what you guys, the rest of you guys wanna weigh in, you know, Chuck, what do you think about it, or?
I am not totally sure that I'm interested, but I guess something needs, and I'm just not sure what.
We're there, we're there and we're dealing with a lot of stuff, and we're floundering, I mean, we're doing the best we can and we're, we're following, we're checking the emails of what other towns are doing, and we think we have something figured out, and then something else pops up, but right now, it's, we need to look out for the safety of the building and the safety of the community and security, we've talked about that in the past, so something, something has to be done, we get no guidance from, really, we're finding our own guidance, so whatever, if something else needs to be done, then I need somebody to step up to the plate.
If I, if I may add something, I've been infrequently going out, but every time I've gone somewhere, every building, business, office, et cetera, has been putting new infrastructure in to protect its employees, and I think while there are plenty of options, some might be more visually appealing, what have you, than others, I think it's very important that in order to protect our employees while also encouraging the opportunity for the public to get back to utilizing the town hall, it would be in the best interest to pursue the, the plan that Deb has, has put out there. I think that it would be the safest and something that she is most comfortable with, being that she's the one who's physically there. That's just my two cents.
If I could add something, this is Julie.
Go ahead Julie.
Um, I, I just wanna say that I understand that we, as the people that are regularly in the office the most, are kind of carrying these, like, ideas of how, how to put everything into place, we are talking about a town building, and so you do kind of need to make some decisions about the infrastructure and what you can do and what you're gonna be willing to do to the building and put in place with the safety of not just the employees and officials, but also the public in mind. That's all.
Hey Bob, do you have some input on this?
I think for what Deb has come up with is a reasonable, actually quite reasonable price to, to keep, try to keep everybody safe and to maintain a safe workplace, so I think for right now, you know, that's, we can move forward with that, if anyone comes up with some better ideas, that's fine, but we, we have to keep the employees safe, we have to keep the general public safe, and none of us wanna be responsible for, you know, someone's health being, being at risk doing their jobs, so I think as long as the town hall can still operate, or town clerk can still be accessible to the public, I think, or in the treasurer and, and everybody else that works in the building, I think that's, that's a great idea.
Thank you, actually going back to what Ed was suggesting.
This is Frank, could I say something?
Well, yep, let me finish talking Frank, there's been many times that I wish that window was still there in the hallway, when they put that hallway, painted around, and they removed that window, there's been many times where I thought it would have been awfully handy to have it back. But being that this is an election year and there's a lot gonna be going on in the office, I don't think construction effect would be the right time, I think that's a great idea as well. So, anyway, I will, if you guys are all still okay with this, with maybe the consideration of things in the future, I will give oil glass the okay on that, removing the shelf and the, and the, whatever that hole is that you talked through, because I do not want that.
Yes, if, this is Ed, if that makes you feel safe enough to, you know, go back in, then by all means, all for it.
Oh, I've been in, oh, I've been in.
I know you've been in, but I mean, with, safe with people coming in.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead Frank.
Yeah, update on COVID, just checked my news feeds, and it appears that there might be a new strain of it out there that hit the East Coast first, that is more powerful and different than what left China. And I got through on a C-SPAN evening show.
Okay Frank, that's, that's good, but we're losing track of what's on the agenda right this second, we need to deal with this door.
This is about Devin or safety, this is about Devin or safety, it would be, it'd be, it may be related to cigarette smoking, the deaths, because Wuhan has a lot more men dying and they have a lot more men smoking in Wuhan, and epidemiologists are looking at that now, but it would be easy just to get some sheet metal, some steel, bolt it to the desk, and hang a piece of plastic, doesn't have to be stiff, it can be soft plastic, and, and, and it wouldn't, you know, go to the hardware store and come back and you wouldn't spend $10 on it and some screws and screw it in there.
All right, okay, thank you for your input Frank, but we gotta deal with the door thing first, bring that up under new business, the, the shield is something that, that's gonna be secondary, but first, we're gonna do the door so we can keep the people out. Does somebody wanna make a motion on, on having Deb hire, have those people split that door so that she can, she can limit access to her area?
I would, I would make that motion for.
Thank you, does someone wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor, Chuck?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your work on that Debbie, and, and contact them and have them done as soon as possible, and, and then Rod's gonna make the shelf for you, and then we'll see what other types of, any kind of clear barriers that you may think you need after, after you can now limit the access to your area.
Thank you.
I've got a question for Deb, Mike.
Go ahead John.
I was wondering whether the dairy supply people that sell soap suds and acid and sanitizer, whether any, whether they can get sanitizer easier than where you can get it, or whether it's an appropriate sanitizer, I don't know, I know in the old days, Clorox used to be substituted for dairy sanitizer, but I've been out of the business long enough to probably not know what I'm thinking about.
No, that's a good question, there's also some distilleries all over the place that have changed over to making hand sanitizers, and believe me, I've been trying. Kristen actually had mentioned to me a while ago that there was hand sanitizer available through bulk apothecary, and when I first tried to place an order, they didn't have the gel, but I went back on a week or so ago, and they do now, they had the gel available. So the gel, that's been ordered, I have, there was a town, there's a salon owner in Berry that, because she's not open, she reached out to all the towns in the state, anybody who wanted about getting gloves and masks and even sanitizer. So I had many conversations with her, and some of that's been ordered, and we did get, I was able to store three gallons of Clorox that we can put into a spray bottle, and that will be our, our way of sanitizing the workstation when the researchers do come in, because they will be put into a separate area with a table, separate from all of us, and, but then we'd have to, we'd have to go in and sanitize after they leave. So all of the stuff has been located and ordered, it's just things arriving. I think today, I arrived a box of gloves, so we're getting closer, we're, we're gonna come up with a plan on when people do come into the building, utilizing the, the OSHA and, and Department of Health protocol for how they have to come into the building, which will be with a mask, they'll stay in a certain area, and we will, we will go to them. So we're getting closer, it's just, it's just been very tiresome trying to get all this stuff, but finally, the orders are starting to arrive, like I said, today, some, some gloves arrived from, I placed, but they have to sit in quarantine, because everything that comes into the office goes into a quarantine area before we open it. So we're getting there John, it's just, it's been pretty, it's, my job every day, and I was telling Julie this today, it's, I go to WPMason.com, I go to Amazon.com, I go to Quill.com, I go, it's been every day, just trying to try, calling, there's a distillery up in northern Vermont, and talking with this guy, I mean, it's just been so agonizingly exhausting and frustrating, just trying to get little, can't get any Laxall spray, can't do it, you can't get it, so that's been hard, because it's been, it's been, well, I'm the one that orders the stuff for the office, so it's been, I, when, on the days that I'm here, it's okay, let's check this site, let's check this site, let's check this site, let's make this phone call, you know, so, but, but we're getting closer, but we've, we've committed from the beginning that we were gonna stick with the stay home, stay safe order, and then we would open up by appointment only.
Well, thank you.
This is Ed, Deb, one, were you going to?
Thanks Deb.
Yep, thank you, welcome, well Ed?
Were you going to order masks?
I have ma, I have, I have ordered masks, we did get some masks for the, from Telescope, I guess you, you guys approved that last week, that's for us, that's for you guys, that's for Kristen, that's for us personally, but for people coming into the, if somebody, if somebody drives down from Burlington to do some research, and they are told to bring a mask and they don't, am I gonna send them back to Burlington, or do I give them a mask? So we're gonna have a few masks, or some masks on hand for those situations. If you guys decide to start having Select Board meetings at the town hall, it's still gonna be neat, you're still gonna have to have a mask, if somebody shows up for the meeting, are you gonna turn them away because they don't have a mask? No, we'll have some masks on hand for those kinds of situations, to protect you guys and to protect the public. Now, that might not be for another couple months, but it will, it will still be necessary.
Thanks Deb.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Was that everything on your report Deb?
I think so. Just, just working with the Secretary of State's office to make sure that we have the right stuff for the elections, but that kinda comes out of election budgets, whatever, they're gonna supply us with everything, the one thing that's kinda in the air is plastic face shields, they had talked about getting those, but I haven't gotten the final word on that yet.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Deb? Kristen?
This is Kristen, I just have one thing, I know that J.K. Adams has, in Dorset, has started to produce the plastic face shields.
Oh.
That's just an FYI for anybody that's interested, but I do know that they've shifted gears and they've started producing those, so just something in the back of your mind.
Yeah, I think I would just, I don't, I mean, whether or not the Secretary of State's office can procure them, I think that it's, I think that it's something that I wanna have for the election workers. I, I just think it's gonna be necessary, I mean, today, the VMCTA board made the decision to cancel the Sept- I mean, today, the VMCTA board made the decision to cancel the September conference. I mean, so we just didn't think it was going to be a very good idea to put all the town clerks in a state in a conference situation in, leading up to a general election. In case somebody came to the conference who was symptomatic or not symptomatic, but carrying. And then you have five, five, 50 town clerks that are COVID positive in a general election. That's, that's going to be very time consuming. So, yeah, yeah, it's, I started having nightmares about all this. So, um, it's, it's, it's been something, that's for sure. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you, guys, for really pulling together and taking care of the loose ends, so to speak, to keep everything going to the best of our ability.
We're trying.
Okay, let's move on to Town Treasures memo, please.
Hi.
Hi, Julie.
Um, so a couple of things, but first, I did email you the memo and then I was working around my desktop at home. And I'm not sure if I emailed you the, the final memo or if I emailed you a rough draft. Working between home and work and home and work.
Yeah.
Things get lost in the shuffle. So, um, I don't know if, if what I'm going to read is exactly what you have, and if it's not, I'm really sorry. Um, and, um, there are two warrants, payroll and accounts payable. The payroll for the week was eight thousand four hundred fifty six sixty seven. Accounts payable was one twenty three three eighteen oh five. Monies from the general fund are one thirteen, two hundred and twelve, eleven dollars and six cents. Highway eleven thousand four twenty six oh four and wastewater seven thousand one thirty seven sixty two. The final payment from Meadowwee School District was made this week and that's why the general fund expenses were so high. Um, there's a bill from Hoyle Tanner and Associates for thirty five hundred, which is, um, of a to, a grand total that will eventually be billed of $10,000. That's for the sludge storage study. Um, you had discussed paying this from the wastewater savings account. And I was just wondering if you would like me to transfer that as I go? In other words, as each bill comes in, do you want me to transfer $3,500 out of that account now and then wait? Or do you want me to transfer $10,000?
It seems like whatever bookkeeping would be easiest for you. It's fine with me. I don't know about the rest of you guys. What, what would be your preference?
Me?
Yes.
Um, I guess I would just go ahead and transfer $10,000 into the wastewater money market. And then when I do my bills, I do transfers from there to the general fund checking account. So that'd be easier. There isn't a difference in what the interest rate is.
Okay. That sounds good with me. What about the rest of you guys?
Okay with me.
Okay with me, you said.
Yes.
This is Bob. That's fine.
Did someone make that?
Same here.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay.
And can, John, can you just confirm the wording of what the motion is?
I confirm that we, we pass out the, the, or transfer from the general fund into the wastewater money market fund.
From the wastewater savings into the wastewater money market fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready?
Ready?
Okay.
Chuck? All in favor? Chuck? John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Close, Ms. Thank you.
Um, and then I did, um, let's see. I have emailed links to the required COVID trainings to Karen, Deb, Sue, Mary Lou, Keith, Kristen, Jonas, Bob Morelino, and Harry Van Meter. Um, and I have collected some so far and others had trouble with printing, but will be signing pre-printed certificates. I have a folder in my office that I plan to turn over to Kristen. I think this is a personnel issue. So I think that, um, you guys should be the keeper of those records. And, um, I will get as many as I can and then I'll turn it over to her to scavenge for the rest, I guess.
Thank you.
And then I did have, just while we were, um, in this meeting, I, one of the people I had reached out to about helping Jonas, um, was curious if you had just a ballpark of what you would pay and how many hours a week it would be.
You asking me now?
Yeah, I, I have, I have no idea.
Okay.
So if you'd comment on that, Jonas?
Sure. I'm not exactly sure what to pay, but the, the purpose of the, of the person, of, of, of the position would be to, uh, set up an Excel spreadsheet and put in the, all the permits that have been issued going backwards. Um, uh, they are all filed by the year and it would be nice to put them in, um, into a database where you can call up the name, the parcel ID, just go backwards. Uh, when you get requests for, uh, letters of compliance, certificates of compliance, uh, it's nice to go into a database rather than reach back for every year, a list of all the permits that have been.
Thank you.
So it's just something that, you know, we have in, um, town of Castleton, um, going back to 2002, but there's another file somewhere. But anyway, so you can call up, uh, any permits issued for a particular parcel. Um, so number of hours, I, um, maybe after this is the visitation or the, uh, working conditions change, um, perhaps the person could, uh, work, uh, five hours a week. Um, you know, just take a couple of files at home and, and put it in the database. Um, so I checked with Julie on the budget and there is some, uh, significant money in the zoning. Not zoning administration, but the zoning.
Expenses.
Item. I think there's 90% of that fund available, but it, we're only talking about four or five hours a week. Uh, depending on the skill of the person. Um, I was looking at a high school senior in Paulette, um, and, um, I wouldn't know what to pay, you know, $12 an hour, 13, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, that's something we'll kind of have to kind of fish around a little bit to see. Um, I don't really know what, um, what it takes to get somebody interested in these days.
Well, Julie, Julie thought she had, you know, maybe, uh, a high school senior, uh, entering into college. Um, it, uh, could set up database easily enough. It's maybe.
Julie, if you have some kind of idea on what you think it would take to get somebody of reasonable skill to do that job, would you send it to me in an email or share it with us in an email?
And. Okay.
Then we can kind of, kind of think about it so we could come up with a, a comment.
Okay, and what I'll do is photocopy, uh, the files for the last five or six years and show you what I'm talking about. Uh, because when somebody asks me about, well, uh, what do you call it? A zoning certification, uh, compliance form. So instead of going back five, six years and searching permit by permit, you just draw it by name or you draw it by parcel ID. And, uh, then check it, perhaps check it against the Lister card. That's all.
It is a pretty tedious process to go back and look at previous zoning permits. Eric has two drawers, um, or he had set it up, two drawers. Um, I think it goes back to what? I don't know, into the nineties or eighties, Jonas. And each file has a year's worth of permits in it. And in some, most cases, there's a list at the front of each one, but it's not alphabetized. So it's literally a hunt and pack. Of perhaps anywhere from twenty five to thirty five permits per year. And if a researcher comes in or somebody calls like Jonas and says, you know, I need to know if there's any outstanding or any permits on this property. It's literally hunt and pack unless they know typically here. So that would be a great project, Jonas. That's a good, a good thing to do.
Deb, this is Harry. Uh, didn't we also run into a, a problem during Hal Wilkins', uh, tenure? Where he was not using the same numbering format that Eric did before? And it was getting confusing?
It was very confusing. Um, he, he had his own system and it didn't go along with the system that had been used all along. So it would be really great to, of course, now zoning permits are recorded in the land record. So that makes it a little bit easier, but that's only been for, oh, I don't know, maybe two years, maybe. Um, so people could look into the land records and find it, but to go back, it, it, it's, it's a hunt and pack. And it's an inconsistent system. So it's probably about time to do something like that.
Jonas, is there a template for, for this worksheet or not?
Oh, sure. I mean, um, look for the, uh, the name, the parcel ID, uh, date of issuance, the description of the, uh, permit. You know, what was issued. I mean, the six fields, five, you know.
So you would take care of setting that all up and then the, and the student would just fill in the blanks?
I'll just use what Castleton had set up.
Okay.
Prior to my coming there, so.
Okay, that sounds great. So we'll keep looking at this and Julie will try and come up with some ideas and, and keep checking and see if there's more than one candidate.
Yeah, I don't mind, um, sending you an email about what, I mean, I don't know how to tell you what, what you should come up with for a dollar amount to pay per hour. I think that the Vermont minimum wage is close to 11. I don't think you're going to get anybody to do this for less than 12 to 13, like Jonas said. I think that's reasonable. Um, and it's always okay to throw out a starting offer and let them know if they can do it for that to let you.
And have to tune it a little bit depending on.
Otherwise, this is now two weeks out to get you even to tell me a number to offer and then. And, and also I don't want to offer this position. I would, I've sent an email asking the parents of these kids if they are interested. And if they say that they're interested in it, I'm going to send them to you. So I don't know if you're on the board I should send them to, but you guys are in charge of personnel, so you would have to make these decisions, not me.
Right. Okay, I would, so is everybody on the board? Do we want to, uh, advertise it as a 12 to $13 position or 12 or start at 12 and, and then just see what we get or?
Well, in this day and, this is Ed, in this day and age, I would go 14, 15, but that's, that's me.
Yeah, these are college, like pre-college kids. That's the only reason I think you could get away with going a little lower than 15.
Exactly.
Is this a permanent position or a temp, like a?
Temp, temp. Yeah. I mean, what, tech added a little bit a year. I mean, if you're able to get, you know, student before he goes away or she goes away to college, you know, that's three months, four months from now, you get quite a bit done.
Right. May I add something?
Please, Kristen.
Um, from the personnel perspective, I think before we go any forward, go move any further in this discussion, I think we need to have a job description. Um,
Got it.
That would be really helpful if that could be just typed up some, and it could be simple, but just something that outlines the, a light outline of what the duties are. Um, and then also we could, you know, the board could put on something like the timeframe and pay and everything like that. And then that way there could be a concrete motion on what the position would be. And then I would be happy, Julie, to take that off of your lap and, um, help facilitate that with, for the board. But I think before doing any, we need to have a job description.
That makes sense. Absolutely.
So I'll get from Jonas a job description and then for the parents that have, that contacted me indicating that their daughter might be interested in, I would just give her your email, Kristen?
Yep, you can give them my email and then maybe Jonas, you and I can, uh, work together to kind of get everything organized. And then we can present, um, to the board. But I would say before we, happy Julie to have the communication with the parents and whatnot. But before we get too much further along, I think the board should approve a job description, just so that we're all on the same page.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
Okay. Sounds like a good direction.
Okay.
And Julie, what else you got?
Um, I did want to say that I am coming in pretty regularly in the afternoons. It's been working for me, um, with the kids at home. Um, I'm usually there at like 12:30. Um, and I bring home what I can bring home and then I'm there answering emails and phone calls and doing the stuff that I need to do in the office. I can answer some emails from home, uh, but I just don't have everything here with me. So I, I wanted to point that out. Um, and then, and this is all business. I said it last week, but I'm going to say it again, just every time. If any departments are ordering supplies that are specific to COVID safety guidelines, I need to know what they are so I can keep track of them. And then the last thing was, um, the check signing that we've been discussing. And I had sent an addendum to my memo, um, which is long and wordy, but I think worthy of our time, so I would like to read that.
Okay, please do.
Okay. My stance on this issue is that dual signers is an inefficient and ineffective tool to guard against fraud. I feel that fraud prevention is important and I have current policies in, in place to address that. And we'll move forward with other policies and procedures in the future. If you feel that dual signing is necessary, then we should have a conversation about who should be the second signatory, but it should not be a member of the board. I've been in contact with Susan Senning, a staff attorney for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We had several emails back and forth. I've forwarded all of them to you. But her opinion is that, and this is a quote, "We recommend the treasurer and assistant treasurer or two other people who are not select board members are the signers on the town's accounts." "A select board should not be a signer on the accounts because there should be a separation of powers between the persons with authority to improve an expenditure, the select board, and persons with control over the assets slash the ability to make the expenditure happen, the treasurer or assistant acting in place of the treasurer. If you have an assistant treasurer, that person can and should be a signer on the accounts. A majority of select board members must still approve orders, although there is some electronic signature guidance that may apply in light of COVID-19. The select board approves them, but the treasurer should process and sign the checks for the reasons stated above. We have created a town finance FAQ, which you can find online here. You have links. The open meeting law FAQ on that page also has guidance for signing orders and electronic signatures that you can review and pass along to the select board. We also have model financial policies and guidance, which you can review online here and propose to the select board and/or adopt on your own for your practices slash internal controls. These statutory citations are the basis for our opinion. I think 24 VSA, section 1571, and of monies paid out by him or her, 1576, the treasurer shall, shall pay orders drawn on him or her, and 1623, and for what purpose each payment is to be made by the treasurer, mean that the select board isn't required by law to sign checks. And I do not think that they should force, that they could force the treasurer to allow them to be a second signatory. Also, the select board has a right by law to see all of the treasurer's records, 24 VSA, section 1571, and auditing powers, and should be able to reconcile those with their own records to provide another check and balance, 24 VSA, section 1622, end quote. Additionally, I reached out to fellow Vermont treasurers. I received five responses and none of these officials indicated that the board is a signer or that dual signing is a requirement in their town. I forwarded those responses to you as well. In regards to how I will be processing bill paying in the future, according to Susan Senning, another quote, "The select board has authority to sign the orders and..." "The select board has authority to sign the orders and approve all payments. And you as treasurer cannot issue a check that they have not authorized slash approved. Therefore, this is the statutory process that has been developed and it uses a separation of a power to ensure good checks and balances. The people approving spending should not have access to the funds and vice versa," end quote. Also, according to the handbook for Vermont town officers created again by the VLCT, the select board controls the expenditure of almost all of the town funds insofar as the treasurer cannot pay out from the town funds unless he or she has an order signed by an authorized member of the board. So I will issue checks after I have an order that has been signed either by the majority of the board or a member authorized to sign on behalf of the board. Once I have a signed warrant, I will process checks. Then I will reprint the same warrant with now the check numbers listed. Those two warrants will be stapled together for review by the auditor and the board as requested. And you may wish to authorize a member of the board to sign out orders on behalf of the board for any checks that need to be issued in between meetings. These don't happen often, but as an example, sometimes mass mailings go out in between meetings and we need to pay for a postal permit in a timely manner. I had my assistant come in this month to do bank reconciliations. I think this is an easy and effective internal control as the person issuing checks is different than the person reconciling accounts. We are working together and I will be researching what other towns do in regards to vacations and other absences when the assistant might be the check issuer. And I, I will keep you want posted on the solution that we work out. And that's it.
Okay, so I, I looked at some VLCT stuff over the past couple of weeks and I think I shared it with you guys. And it, it appears to me that the system that we had in place worked for us, but it was also lacking. We didn't, we didn't have anybody else reconcile the checkbook or anything like that. And, and the fact that it was a, an okay, it was a system that, that worked for us at that time, it doesn't appear to be with what they recommend of today. So that's my opinion on it. Anybody else wanna make a comment on it?
Well, I guess it's my turn. This is Chuck. And I made numerous calls to area towns. Fairhaven, Castleton, West Rutland, Wells, Dandy, Tinmouth, Wallingford, and Rupert. So I guess I'll tell you what pretty much the majority of them said to me. A bunch of them have town managers. The town manager takes care of the orders. And either the treasurer or clerk of those towns is the signer of the checks. But the orders are seen before any check is written. That's not what I would propose, but that's what these towns are doing. So I'll end my conversation at that and wait for another option. Go ahead. Continue the meeting.
Who wants to weigh in on this next?
Okay, this is Ed. I am still of the opinion that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. This process has worked just fine for us. This was the process that she knew was in effect when she ran for the office. So I, I'm, I don't have any problem with the select board. I don't care what the other towns in the state are doing. What, what we're doing seems to be working for us. So I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. John, could we have your comment on it?
Yeah, I think the procedure needs to be modernized. I think getting the warrants out in our own email ahead of time, at least it gives some of us the opportunity who aren't working full-time like you other guys. But it's a chance to look over. I think that's a much better oversight than a check writing during a busy meeting. So I think, and I think the, having the assistant treasurer reconcile the accounts is, is real good progress too. I, I think that oversight is, is best when we can see the warrants and then, because I have a couple of questions on this week's warrant for the payables. But I may not have picked that up during a busy meeting. So I'm in favor of what Julie is proposing for this at this time. I also would like to go through that book and if you guys could print out that checklist book that Mike emailed us, said 30 some pages of it. I don't want to print it out on my place, but I wonder whether we should take up several of them the next future meeting and meetings so that we could just test our, we're doing comparison. Julie could prepare, you know, several of them at a time so we can get through all those questions in a period of time over the year. And then we'll just see what, how we pick it up and it's a good test.
Okay, thank you, John. Bob, what do you feel?
The, the current process, especially during this, during this period with the, you know, the, the process that we're going through is, is just not gonna work. And the old process of the two signatures being required, I'm not sure that we were going through that in the right, we were handling it correctly anyway. By having Julie for convenience was printing the checks and signing the checks and then requiring us to sign them with a second signature. But I'm not sure that that was even the right process because the warrants hadn't been signed at the time. So by us signing the warrants, then we would give her, I, I guess we would be instructing her or however you want to word it, to, to go ahead and print the checks and, and make the payments. But the, the other, the old process, I don't think was even was, was necessary or even being handled correctly. If that makes any sense. She can't, as we've spoke, she can't print the checks and, and send them out or, or anything until we sign the warrants and approve it. And then everything is audited anyway, so it's, it's all double-checked. So there should not be any reason for, for any, any concern.
Okay. And one more thing, I asked Mr. Mudgeet what he would consider some good checks and balance. And then he said that it would, it would be good for us to review the bank statements monthly. And that would, that would give us the heads up if any check is getting written that didn't have a warrant for or anything like that, or anything was transferred or anything like that. So that's, that's what he felt was, was the best way to maintain checks and balances. So. Does anybody else have anything to add on this discussion? So then we're at a point right now.
I have one more comment. This is Chuck.
Yeah.
The town of Wells does have their books checked monthly by an auditor. Forgot to mention that when I was telling you about all the other towns, but they do have their records checked monthly.
By an outside auditor or someone in the town?
Just was told that they were checked by an auditor monthly. So I'm not, I'm not sure if it's a town's taxpayer or if it's an outside concern. I'm thinking probably an outside concern.
Okay, I could, I could find that out anyways. But, so we're at a point right now. So we need to decide if, if we want to drop the, the select board signature on the check. Now, how, how do we feel about that? Does somebody want to make a motion that, that we remove the slack board signature on the check? Or does somebody want to make a motion that we retain the select board's signature on the check?
I'll make the motion, this is John, to eliminate the select board.
Okay.
On the check.
Is it, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion. This is Bob.
Okay, Bob. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Okay. All in favor of that motion? Chuck?
No.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
I'll be the tiebreaker and I vote yes that we remove the select board signature in lieu of the new checks and balances that we're going to establish. Okay. Do you have anything else, Julie? I know you'll have to get that paperwork together.
You voted to remove yourselves as signers, but do you, are you voting to eliminate a second signature requirement?
No. Yeah, I, yes, I believe. So I, I'm, I'm voting to remove the select board's second signature requirement.
Okay, well, I think they're two separate issues, right? So you guys are signers.
Right.
So right now, there's seven signers on the account.
Right.
Myself and my assistant and all of you.
Right. And so all of the.
There's also a requirement that two signatures are on the account.
Right. Okay, so I believe that, that what we just voted on and is what we just discussed, that, that the second signature of the select board, not the second, you don't need two signatures anymore. You'll just have you or your assistant sign the checks.
Okay.
Right, I think I have, sorry, this is Kristen. I think I have that the motion was made to remove the requirement for the select board to be the secondary signers, but not to take the select board away as signers. Is that, like, they would still be, they would still be authorized to sign things, but they don't have to be the secondary signers on the?
No. No, we didn't need, we didn't need to sign at all. The, the five slack board members would no longer need, would be signers on the checks and they would, and the second signature would not be required.
That's the intent of my motion.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
We're not giving up, obviously, the, the signing of the warrants at all. That's not.
Right, that's, that's what I, I'm probably, then I didn't articulate it correctly, but I think that's.
So then moving forward from here, well, it'll just be Julie and the, and the assistant that will sign the checks. And which will, one of those two people. Is that, do you, do you understand what I'm saying, Julie? Am I saying it enough? And what you understand is that?
So there won't be a dual signature requirement. There's only one signature required on the checks.
Right.
And the select board's no longer signers on the accounts.
Right.
So Kim and myself will be the two signers on the account.
Correct.
And we, we are going through, now, I don't know exactly the checklist. I, you haven't emailed that information to me that John was talking about, but if someone would, I can work.
I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay. And I did see Frank's comment and VLCT does not, did not indicate to me, Frank, that they want two signers.
Everything that you've found so far, they, they've said, especially the fact that that the select board shouldn't be signing is, has been, has been strongly put out and not necessary for two signers, one signature. And it could be either you or your assistant.
Right. And I, I think we will just have to be diligent about the checks and balances. I think having the two warrants would be good. I think it'd be great to have you guys review them. I get the next meeting. So I would prepare a warrant for a meeting. It wouldn't have any checks on it. I would come in the next day once it was signed and approved. I would print all of those checks. I would print a second warrant, which would list everything that was on the first warrant. Now with check numbers coinciding. And they would be stapled together. So you would then be able to look that the warrants match. And then you would be able to look at bank statements. Statements include all of the checks that have come through, little tiny pictures of them. So you would be able to see that all of the checks that have come through match the warrants that you have seen and approved.
Okay. So now that we're all clear with that, it is, it was, it was much easier for me to look, review the warrants over on the email at my time than trying to quickly look through them in front of the audience. So I, I do like that a lot better. And having said that, would somebody make a motion to approve the warrants for this month, for this meeting?
Well, I can't make a motion because I never saw the warrants.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, John. Do you have a second for the, to pay the warrants that were presented to this meeting tonight?
I do have a question on one of them.
Okay. Go ahead.
The furnace repair, I forgot to ask Keith that on the town garage. $800 or something.
Oh, wow, that's.
Are you aware of that, Julie, what that?
That was.
That's a blower on the furnace at the town garage.
Oh, you're still here. Okay, Keith, good.
Yeah, it's a blower repair on the furnace at the town garage.
Okay, so that was a rebuild then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Who, who repaired it? This is Ed. Could I ask who?
Baker.
Okay, any more questions on the warrants? Does somebody want to second them?
I can't because I never signed.
Ed, or Bob, you want to second them warrants? Hey, Bob, are you there?
I am. I was hoping Ed would, if I'm gonna be the one to sign them, I was hoping Ed would second the motion to, to sign them or to approve them. But.
Well, I guess I can do that then.
Okay. So all in favor of paying the warrants? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. Okay. Approved, okay. Are we all set with you now, Julie?
Um, I think so. I am going to need some time to get um, paperwork from the bank and sign everything. Um, I'll probably need the, a copy of the minutes with these motions and votes, and um, I will probably need to order different checks. So it may not be the next meeting or the, or even a couple of meetings before you don't have to sign.
Okay.
How many uh, checks do you have that you can't use? If you go that route?
I don't know off the top of my head, Chuck.
Okay, well, that's information you'll have by the next meeting and stuff, so we'll just work through it.
Okay.
All right, it's. We have a emergency management director's report and the health officer's report. Those were all sent to us. Do we need to read them out loud since we're running late?
I will run through it very quickly. Uh, Polit Emergency Manag-, this is Kristen, Emergency Management Director Report. For April 2020, COVID-19 updates have been posted to the Facebook website every day since March 12th. Participated in seven conference calls this month with Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities. Submitted the local emergency management plan for the Town of Polit to the RRPC and the state. As for the health officer's report. Uh, completed one dog bite report on April 1st. Investigated a complaint of trash at 1289 Vermont Route 149. Sent registered letter to a landlord of two unoccupied rental buildings that neither allow, are allowed to be rented per court order until they meet the Rental Housing Code. Notified Vermont Health Department. Asbestos slash lead program engineer of a house intending to be demolished. Notified owner of the state of Vermont requirements to demolish a building. And that's all from Bob.
Okay, thank you very much. Wastewater. The uh, what Jill would like to do, Jill proposed that they're tentatively looking at buying a truck suitable to haul our sludge. And they would like to contract to haul our sludge and they would do it for the same price that we're paying A1 right now. And I said I would bring it up to the meeting. I would say yes, because it just keeps the continuity in with the uh, with all their uh, with her operation, and if the price is the same, then I think we have a much better control. And then they can do that, so how does everybody else feel?
Mike, this is Bob. Who was, who was interested in hauling it?
Jill and her, her company, Vitums. They have a, they have a pump truck, but they're looking at upgrading it, and then they would buy a truck that would be big enough to haul our sludge. And they would do it for the same price.
Okay, well, why wouldn't it be a better price? Then uh.
I don't know.
They should beat the competition if they want the work, but, okay.
I think the continuity, one of the problems we run into A1 is, is they don't always communicate very well.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that, that to uh, to have it, i- if we can get it for the same price, then I think we're, we're better off because we're, they're, they're doing it, and then they don't have to worry about coordination or anything like that. They got, they got it, so. That's my opinion. Anybody else want to weigh in on it?
This is Chuck. Seems like uh, when this company took over the wastewater treatment facility. All of a sudden, after they were there for a little bit, we ended up paying more money.
Yeah, and we're going to pay more money.
Right, okay, so now we're talking about them purchasing a truck that will handle our sludge. Along with probably other places. But how long do you think it will take her to present us with a rate increase?
Well, that's an interesting perspective on that, Chuck. Um. I, I don't know. I can ask that question certainly, or.
Yeah, because we're going to sign a contract probably with them. And that contract needs to be good for a lengthy period of time.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
Okay. John, do you have any comment on it?
No, you guys are the trucking. You guys know more about trucking than I do.
Okay, I'll talk to Jill some more about it then, but I'll, I'll keep this, this door will still be open as far as we're concerned, or do we want to just shut the door right now?
Mike, this is Bob. Um, I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with it as long as uh, we're not putting ourselves in a bad position by getting all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak, by dealing with one person in case there's a hiccup at the sewer treatment plant and, and as long as uh, you know, the way the things are running down there wouldn't, there'd be no reason to create more sludge, to create more, more hauling and more work for them, I guess, uh.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm, I'm okay with it.
All right, I'll have some more communication with her then and, and go from there. Okay, so what other, thank you guys, those are good points. What other uh, any old or unfinished business? New business?
I have something on the new business side. Um. Seems like uh, well, back on April 7th in our minutes. We got the ANR got in touch with us. They've released info regarding no open burns during COVID-19 to ease, ease the strain on local officials. Now, I called a uh, forest fire warden. And that warden mentioned to me that there, that's correct. There is not to be any outside burning. But he said his company has had a couple issues. But one of those issues, the state got in touch with the individual that started to have the need for the fire department to show up. Recently, the Town of Wells had a forest fire. I was told by the fire warden that they issued apparently a burn permit. Now, what part of that forest fire warden didn't understand the ANR's comment? What we're supposed to be doing. But according to the state, the individual can be fined.
Yeah, they always, it used to be that way. So.
Just wanted to bring out the.
As far as I know, that's, that's still the way it is, so. Okay. Um, Jonas, did you have anything you wanted to share with us tonight, or?
Sure, I'll, I'll make it quick. Um, with respect to the health officer's report, uh, Bob Murillo. Um, so, an individual contacted me regarding they were going to take down a dwelling. Um, I think it was Gregory Cross. Uh, it's the old Lewis Farm building. So the guy asked me uh, through an email, does he need a permit? So I said no. Um, and then, so Mr., so Bob sent me an email saying that the Vermont Department of Health requires a permit. So um, I got ahold of Rick Oberkurt, the state permit specialist. He sent me information regarding uh, uh, from the, from the fire marshal. And uh, so I read that and there was exemptions for um, exemptions for single-family dwellings and it was not a public building. So that was not the information that I needed, and then I contacted the assistant fire marshal. Who then could not find the form that needed to be filled out, and it was not a permit, but it's a, it's an application. He just basically wanted to know where the material goes, so. Um, Mr. Cross called me on a Sunday afternoon and so I said, I don't have the form. The guy, the assistant fire marshal couldn't, couldn't find it located for me, couldn't send me the link. Until later that week after I told the guy to go ahead and take the building down. Um, he did contract with Ace Carding um, out of, I think, Washington County, and they have a certified landfill somewhere in New York State. Either Saratoga or Washington County. Um, the individual, there is an ex, there was an exemption for uh, asbestos. It's either by weight or volume or both, so uh, but it was on one of those forms that I got after the fact. Um, so in any event, I felt comfortable with the guy saying, you know, take, take the building down. Um, so in any event, I do know the process now a lot better. Um, I don't think there was any intentional harm, and I think they did it the right way. You know, they hired a certified company and I think they did everything okay, so I just wanted to let you know that um, that where that, that's where it came from. The other thing, uh, let's see, for Julian, I did get my certificate. I've been online VOSHA training. So I printed it up in Castleton because I had to do that up there too, so. Um, as far as permits go, there was a permit issued last week for a building addition on Vermont Route 30. There was two permit applications mailed out last Wednesday, one for Barn, and I forgot what the others for. Uh, Mr. Cross is looking to uh, build an 800 square foot building set further back from the road at 2391 Route 153. He's the guy that took down the house. In any event, I told him that I would send out a permit application tomorrow and then get back to them. I think I'm going to scotch tape it to the outside window. But in any event, I will get ahold of them and uh.
I think the other one was Sergeant Jonas.
Oh yeah, Sergeant, that was the week before, I think. I think that was a shed. I, I didn't bring home my materials and my call sheet, so I really, I can't be precise.
Jonas, if you wanted to email um, a summary to me, I'd be happy to forward it to the board.
Okay, I'll do that tomorrow, I'll be in. Um, the other thing is uh, for, see, I talked to John Malcolm some time ago regarding the library steps. And uh, there is a, a grant program coming up in July, if the state has money available, um, since the governor announced uh, probably a $400 million shortfall. I'm not even sure this grant program's going to exist, but it's a Human Services and Educational Facilities Grant Program. This is for the library steps. Matching state grants for capital costs associated with major maintenance, renovation, development of facilities. Used for human services and healthcare educational opportunities. So the library would fall in that category. Um, the grant range is one, uh, $1,000 to $25,000. In the past, the state has allocated $200,000 for that program. Um, they usually issue between 15 and 20 grants. Um, but again, I don't know that it's going to exist, but, so I did speak to, I did send to a contractor the specs that were developed uh, by Ralph Nims. Uh, that the bid came in above and beyond. I uh, so it wasn't done. So I just thought I'd have him take a look at it and see uh, without any commitment, obviously. But if you're able to, if you're able to apply for the grant and you still want the work done, uh, you know, it's worth a shot.
I, I, thank you, Jonas. I, I, this is John. I don't think the library board is dealing with, with either the ramp or the steps at this time.
Okay. All right, I'll uh.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'll give that, uh, I'll give Damon uh, I'll send him an email.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Jonas.
Okay.
All right, anybody have any public comment?
Uh, I have three points quickly.
Okay.
This is Frank. Um, in regards to the assistant for, for Jonas, or the intern quote unquote. Uh, the process is, is this person would be an employee, so all rules and laws apply, including policies relative to what, who gets benefits in health insurance, et cetera. So you have to be strict upfront with anybody relative to the policies of the number of hours per week, et cetera, whatever you've set up as to who qualifies for health insurance and, and, and/or any other benefits. Uh, you can't break those rules. Those have to be consistent and you can set them up so that you can exclude somebody if they don't have a certain number of hours, but I don't know what you've done on that.
I've done any.
Right, also, I was wondering if, I was wondering if the Vermont League of Cities and Towns have Julie's info. There might have been info on record for them on a treasurer's bond for our old treasurer or retiring treasurer, she's not old. Uh, and that information typically the organizations don't, when they change treasurers, would not notify us if we were writing the bond for a treasurer's bond, for example. So we'd have to annually find out who is the treasurer to make sure that the current information on any bond, if any, was current. Uh, for standard business practices, for accountants, you can go online and find out a bunch of this stuff. Typically is recommended that a person tasked with receiving money or accounts receivable is one person and another person would be using, would be who's writing checks or in charge of accounts payable would be another person. So the same person isn't able to handle accounts receivable and accounts payable, because that's when fudging happens historically, and that, when, when one person's handling both. Uh, that's the second. The third is uh, the government, which you are, has rules in uh, elected governments in the state of Vermont. And I'm not privy as to what the exact details are, but I know, because we had to deal with this a lot with bidding on insurance for towns and cities and school systems and all sorts of stuff, is that you may have a bid needed on the se, on the sewer system uh, trucking. Uh, which case the other party coming in might be interested or another party, but you don't know unless you advertise it out as a bid, and this might get you a lower price. If the provider of the trucking knew that other players were involved and they were bidding against each other, as opposed to just outright land, awarding a contract without any bid. Uh, but there may be rules and laws around that process. The government select boards as well as any other entity in the state.
Here by seven.
Okay, Frank. Well, thank you for that information, and we'll take it into consideration as we move forward. Does anybody else have anything to offer for public comment? Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will. This is Chuck.
All right, Chuck. All in favor? Chuck? John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ed?
Ed's gone.
Unanimous. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.